Ms. Rundell, we've leveled that at three virtual participants. Dr. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward is absent. Ms. McThebola?
Here.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Here.
Dr. Robinson is absent. Ms. Scarpelli?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Rundell?
Here. Um, Dr. Pucci Bender, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with PL nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on May twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the administration building on the same date. Copies of the procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Dr. Brennan, will you read the mission statement?
Gladly. The Glen Rock School District founded on principles of education in partnership with the support of community provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. So we have some recognition.
We do. So, um, good evening, everyone. Um, out there, we have from, uh, Girl Scout troop nine, five, four, five, nine. We have Hannah Perez and Katie Stallone who are gonna give us a little brief uh, presentation. Do you go right to the mic right there?
Sorry.
No problem. And then we'll pull up your mural up there, Keith.
Do I have to like, no, they're gonna pull up. Oh, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Are we good?
Yep.
Yep. Hi, I'm Hannah Perez.
And I'm Katie Stallone.
We are sophomores at Glen Rock High School. We have been girl Glen Rock Girl Scouts since kindergarten. We and our fellow troop mates are setting out to be our Girltopia journey so we can get on track to receive our gold award. For us, being a Girl Scout means empowering, empowering people, and especially the younger generation to stand up for what we believe in and spread the power of positivity. We want to share this message with all the students of Glen Rock High School and middle school. In order to spread the word, we are proposing to install a mural in the Glen Rock Media Center. Our mural is meant to be a reminder that po- the power of positivity. We have chosen to put the phrase, "We ch- we rise by lifting others," which is an uplifting message that we feel all students at Glen Rock High School and middle school need to hear. We have brought you a handout, including an exact example of what the mural would look like. It's right there.
All right. Uh, we are hoping to put this in the library at the blank wall at the back of the Glen Rock High School library. Um, the donation to the BOE will cost around two hundred fifty dollars. We'll be getting our supplies from local donations in the Home Depot wish lists, which one of our Girl Scouts have created. We hope to start and finish painting over Memorial Day weekend. We would start, we would like to end our journey by giving an education seminar and sharing our message with all the other Glen Rock Girl Scout troops. Seminar will be held the following weekend after we are done painting.
We have already met with our principal, Dr. Parent, who supports this project. Dr. Parent told us this is an important message that has not been heard often enough. He has encouraged us to come here today and speak with you. Lastly, we have the support of our troop leaders and parents who will guide us throughout this entire project and will continue to do so.
We thank you in advance for considering this important project and we hope to seek your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the, who's the artist?
Um, me and also I have help from a bunch of other Girl Scouts, including Hulu over here in the green sweatshirt.
Oh, looks great. It's great work.
Thank you.
Can I have a question? I just wondered how big is the mural gonna be?
Um, it's gonna be pretty large, trying to fit like most of the wall, but yeah, it's gonna fill up.
Like four by six, four feet by six feet, or is that too big?
Yeah, around that size.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, um, so the, the, we have your, a lot of members of your troop here? Yes, yes. Could we?
Yeah, the whole of the entire troop. I think we do have the entire troop here.
All right, can we, um, get a picture in front here with the board president so we can post it to social media? Is that all right?
Of course. Yeah.
Okay, all right. We're gonna do a picture of Mr. Rundell as a citizen. Well, so, uh, tonight, a brief presentation by Mr. Escalante, our middle school assistant principal, um, to talk a little bit about, uh, sort of at the end of the year, how teams have done this year. Um, presentation is in backup for the trustees as well. It'll be up here on the screen for members of the audience. So, Mr. Escalante?
Okay. Thank you for having me here this evening. Um, like Dr. Charleston said, I'm just here to kind of recap our year and let you know what our plans are going forward for our teams. Um, we had a great year with the teams. Um, I first off want to thank all our team leaders from this past year, as well as all the team members um, who devoted a lot of time and it was important time dedicated to student, to students and um, it's a very important discussion how we can best serve our students here at Glen Rock. What I have there is, I'll get to this in a little bit, but we did some capstone experiences that are less faculty meeting on May ninth, and that was one of the slides that the teacher made, that the teachers made on the Team Rock Seven. And they added their bit emojis and had some fun with it, which was, which was nice. Um, but so just for the recap of this year, um, the real important thing that we honed on this year was student achievement and implementing the five most important team strategies that our teaming consultant, Jack Burke Meyer, um, has given to us. And those five strategies were consistency among teachers, student advocacy, so every student having an adult advocate, a parent communication log, a team calendar for planning, and then check-ins for weeks three, five, and seven. So this was the first year we really had all the teams implement those five strategies and lived it. And they were very effective. I certainly think for next year, we're excited to put a Glen Rock twist on some of those strategies. Um, but certainly those were very effective and the teams really did a good job in implementing those strategies. Um, as far as communication within the community, we have a lot more, um, communication. We have our team emails now. Teams held parent meetings when necessary, um, as well as made phone calls to parents, team emails to parents. Um, and I thought that that was really, really important to kind of bridge the gap that we had through virtual instruction. Um, and the teams really did a great job and received a lot of positive feedback at the phone calls, um, from the, from the phone calls from the team and just again, kind of developing that, um, that important relationship between home and school. Um, so again, I think the teams really did a good job of fostering that, uh, that connection and partnership with families. And then the last piece of it from this year is the professional development. So Jack Burke Meyer, who we have spoken about earlier, is a national, nationally recognized teaming consultant. Um, and he was just here this past Monday and Tuesday, met with all the teams and myself and Dr. Parent, and we just talked about the future. Um, he felt that our teams are in a great place and we set a really good foundation this year, um, that we'll continue to build on over the summer. And we're very excited to have the teachers, um, take on those roles as the team leaders. Um, but there'll be more professional development for our selected team leaders this summer with Jack Burke Meyer, with myself, and also some articulation with the past team leaders of this year to see where they kind of left off. So we do have a lot of support coming for them because it's very important for our, uh, teacher team leaders for next year to have that, um, training and facilitation of the team agenda and team meetings. So just some highlights that I was gonna show, um, from the capstone experiences that the teachers presented at our faculty meeting. Um, so they, Glen Six and Rock Six team, they worked very closely together, so they actually presented together. And some of the things that they shared upon this year that they did that were different from the five strategies. So like I said, they, every team had the five strategies, but each team had some unique either events or strategies that they used themselves. Um, and I thought it was important for all of them to term key some of these ideas with other teams going forward. Um, so for the grade six teams, they actually had a sixth grade orientation, uh, both teams together, uh, during their lunch to kind of set the expectation over what are some of the things that as a grade six teachers they value and, um, are really important for the students to, to know what's expected of them. And I think that was a great thing, especially for our grade six teams, as all the students are new to the building. And to the, for them to see their teachers united, um, and some of their expectations and have some consistencies coming from elementary school. I think that's really important that they have consistency, um, as it's a new environment for them with multiple teachers and they're not in the same classroom most of the day. This team also did, um, a few of their own SCL days, so each subject area, um, picked a different SCL activity. Some were bracelet making with positive affirmations, um, some did yoga, some wrote thank you letters. And again, these were just individual days that they chose and all the teachers planned together, one in the fall and then one in the, in early or mid-March, um, that they did, which, which was great and emotionally, um, was a good, they felt very beneficial to the students to have that little, um, time as well. And then lastly, and the most important, or I guess the, uh, the most exciting part coming up is both grade six teams are currently planning a very exciting field day for this June third that's gonna be the entire day. Um, which again, this is kind of a, a fun capstone for the students, uh, because they wanted them to have a fun end of year event. So there'll be kickball, there'll be, um, some arts and crafts, there'll be a barbecue, there'll be, uh, a moon bounce. They really thought, they really thought of everything. So um, I know the sixth graders are looking forward to that. And again, the team really came together to give them a fun, uh, end of year event. For the grade seven teams, what they highlighted, Glen Seven, um, came together and did a really great Earth Day. Um, act, Earth Day fun event for the afternoon. The teachers planned some interdisciplinary, um, components, including science, and they touched on things like water filtration. They actually teamed up and reached out to Perry's Forest, who was nice enough to donate some seeds for planting. Um, they engaged in some upcycle art project with some, um, some trash that they could find with throughout the, throughout the, um, the grounds and some haikus and scavenger hunt riddles, uh, to kind of touch a little bit on the ELA piece. I was out there, Dr. Parent was there, it was a beautiful day, and it was really great for the students to kind of have that, uh, Friday on Earth Day to engage in these activities and, and work together. Um, for the Rock Seventeen, they actually took one of Jack's suggestions and, and one of the big things that he preaches, especially in middle school, is that the, the bells don't run our day, we do. Um, so at the, often at the end of the marking period, um, students may need to catch up in certain subject areas. Um, the Rock Seventeen found that there was, um, some students that needed to catch up on work, whether it was COVID-related absences or regular traditional absences or other reasons. So what they did, um, at the end of the day on March twenty-fifth is they essentially made a makeup day. And there was a recovery day that we had built into our schedule. Um, so they came up with a schedule and identified students who may need to catch up towards the end of the marking period and science and ELA. Um, so the teachers created this schedule and pulled students and, um, it was a great, it was really, really successful for them and especially really good for them academically as for a final push towards the end of the marking period, um, to help those students, maybe if they're in the B-plus range to get to, you know, an A-minus or finish some assignments for the end, towards the end of the year. And they said with the next recovery day we have coming up for marking period four, they feel that it was so successful, they would like to do it again. Um, so that would be the Glen Seventeen. And then for our Glen Eight team, um, they had their own discussions and kind of har- harping back to what I just discussed about consistency policies, and they came up with a consistency policy across the board in regard to late work. Um, so that was really important for those Glen Eight students to understand what the expectation is. And what they found as teachers is that it really promoted students that even if work was late, or maybe they did miss a due date, it really encouraged them to hand in the assignment and put the, the effort forth to get the credit for the grade. Um, because too oftentimes, sometimes a student might feel that they're gonna get a zero and they're not gonna hand it in. But this team came to a good consensus that we want students, even if they miss a due date, to show that effort and, and be rewarded for that effort. For our Rock Eight team, um, once again, they said they got tremendous feedback from parent phone calls, um, that they had made, uh, just filling them in on positive things that they're seeing in the classroom. And again, I, I think it's really important that these teams really helped us this year continue to bridge the gap that we had in virtual instruction and have that more personal touch and, um, embrace that partnership with parents at home, uh, and the teachers so that we can support students, um, both at home and here. And then lastly, um, they, the Rock Eight team also had a, uh, reward system, token reward system that they put in place to fight the early onset senioritis that grade eight students some, sometimes tend to get. Um, but they came up with a reward system that the team, that they, uh, teachers would team up and, uh, students would be rewarded for, um, whole class positive behavior and, you know, uh, they found that it greatly deterred any side discussion or disruption and, you know, they reward them with a fun day outside or, um, they have kickball. And again, that was certainly something that they felt as a team was very beneficial. So going forward, um, we are very excited to release the application to the teachers for the team leader position. Um, I have been approached by several teachers who are very interested in the position, which are very excited about. Um, and we will continue to work with Jack and help you here this summer on June twenty-first, like I said, for some professional development for those selected team leaders. And we will continue to have professional development with myself, um, and the supervisors as well, or the former team leaders this year as well, to, um, make sure that we facilitate having these team leaders in a really good position for next year. Um, and like I said, we're very excited. Jack gave us tremendous feedback, uh, at his last visit this past Monday and Tuesday. And he thinks that we have a really good foundation that we can continue to build, build upon for, um, for the coming year and continue to promote cross-curricular planning, um, and really continue to empower the teams to provide, uh, support and interventions for students before we even have school counselor or CST who are also involved with the teams for support, but we think it's important to empower the teachers to really, um, provide those supports for, as the first level for, for each student. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions or, or anything for me? Yes.
Thanks for this. This is a great detailed explanation for us and also the public as to what these teams mean and what they can do. Um, you mentioned right near the beginning of your presentation that there might be a way to add a Glen Rock twist to these programs. I was wondering if you had any ideas you can elaborate on?
Yes, so we have the five teaming strategies that I talked about in terms of the consistency amongst the teams. Um, and the consistency, the student advocacy, uh, the communication log, the team calendar, and weeks three, five, and seven. So for instance, um, the calendar is something that, you know, Jack's big, uh, way of doing it is you get an old-fashioned calendar and you write on it and you kind of have your whole team map out what the projects are, their assignments. The Glen Rock twist would be we have Schoology. So we have that as our, you know, really basis for students to check for assignments. Um, so again, all the strategies are great, but I think, um, the feedback from the teachers was we can also continue to build on it in a Glen Rock specific way that matches what he wants, but really utilizes our resources to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Mr. Escalante. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Really looking forward to seeing how far this can go and what's coming. So really thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so this brings us to our first public comment of the night. These are agenda items only, so unless we're voting on it tonight and it's on the agenda, um, please wait until the second public comment to come up. Um, last week we had a little problem with people running overtime. So remember it is three minutes. Um, I've asked Mr. Underconnect to take the time, so, um, we will be holding to that tonight. Um, so I guess at this time we'll open public comment at seven forty-nine.
If there's any virtual members of the public that has a comment to make for the board, please raise your hand.
We, can we, can we talk about G two before we have this public comment? Um, so G two is our second reading tonight, so, uh, just so that we can have public comment at the same time. Um, does anybody have? So if anyone in the public has questions about G two, this is also the time that you would bring that up. All right, thank you.
Ms. Rundell, there's no, uh, virtual members in the public that have raised their hands.
Can I just get clarification on G two? Is it, um, like test to stay?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right? Seeing nobody. Close it up at seven fifty-nine or seven fifty-one. All right. Um, I need a motion to discuss, uh, our G items, G one through G twenty-two. Ms. Scarpelli, seconded by Dr. Brennan. Does anybody have anything on the G items to discuss? All right, seeing none?
Dr. Brennan? Yes. Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. I need a motion to discuss B one through B eight. Dr. Pucci Bender, seconded by there's that, Ms. Scarpelli. I know. Um, does anybody have anything to discuss on the B items? All right, seeing none?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Ms. Run- Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. Uh, and now I need a motion to discuss items P one through P thirteen. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. McThebola. We got everybody in there at some point tonight. Um, does anybody have anything to talk about in the P items?
Just a reminder for the board on P four, we are removing Alyssa Sylvester, middle school science teacher. She has withdrawn her candidacy for the position. So we're removing Alyssa Sylvester.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpelli?
I, I just wanted to wish, um, Ms. Cook and Ms. Hamilton, um, the best of luck in their future endeavors and thank them for all the years they've been here at Glen Rock. I think both of them are twenty-plus years here, um, servicing our students and um, they've affected many lives for us. So I want to just thank them for that.
Thank you. So great. Um, anybody else? Um, not under, uh, P seven, um, we are approving, um, Dean and Benjamin to be running our, uh, live stream. So just taking this opportunity to remind, um, the public that starting next month at our very next meeting, we are excited to have these students involved and, uh, it's a great experience for them. I'm sure they will do a fantastic job. So this is just a reminder that the, um, that if you want to make public comments, start from next meeting on, you do have to be here in person. Um, so that was all I wanted to say. And thank you to Dean and Benjamin also for taking on that role. Um, anybody else? Corey?
Just want to say thank you to those who volunteer their time for the extracurricular activities. You know, we have to approve people if they volunteer or get paid, and it really speaks a lot when I see people splitting stipends and volunteering their time. So, thank you to all.
And thank you, Mr. Corey. All right, seeing none?
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. Now I need a motion to approve our HIB resolutions. Ms. McThebola, seconded by Ms. Scarpelli. Oh, roll.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Pucci Bender?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. Um, next for the board is our vandalism and suspension report you can look at. Um, and that brings us to old business. Does anybody have any old business? No? Um, and then new business. Um, Mike, you want to talk about the?
Yeah, real quick, we, uh, chose to put the New Jersey, New Jersey School Boards Conference, uh, that's coming up in the fall on the agenda. Just throwing it out to the board, as far as protocols and procedures, I don't get involved in falling up front, who's going, who's not. I reserve rooms for all nine board members. Uh, so start giving it some thought. It's October twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-sixth, and you're leaving on that day. You can opt to stay down there for two nights, you can opt to stay for one night, you can opt to not go at all. Uh, you can rest assured between, no later than mid, mid to, uh, the end of August, my secretary, Colleen, will be dogging everybody to get a commitment as to whether or not you're gonna be going down so we don't get charged for actual, actual reservation.
Thanks, Mike. This is the first time that it's gonna be actually in person.
It's two years.
Yeah, to be the first time for both of us, actually, to be able to be there. So that's exciting. Um, our next meeting is June thirteenth. If anyone has any, um, other new business, I can open up, uh, public comments, two of two. Uh, so again, three-minute timing, timing, whatever timer from Mike, and, um, state your name and your address. Um, and that's it. So anybody from the public first, and then we'll go to see if anyone on Zoom.
Hello, Kristen Roth, thirty-four Gordon Place. I'd like to start off by saying I am a lifelong resident. I chose to bring my family back to Glen Rock, brief, you know, hiatus elsewhere for the safety of the town and the school system. I want to speak up today for those children who are being pulled out of classrooms for the policies that you have in place. First, it was the quote mandatory quarantine for five days for unvaccinated kids and then to return to school with a mask for five days. And now it's tests to stay, where our children who are unvaccinated will be required to test every single day to stay in a classroom to get the education that your values and principles are based upon. Not every parent can afford a nanny to stay home with their kids when they are pulled out of school over and over and over again. All I ask is that you put yourself in the shoes of those children that are getting pulled out of the classroom. Might I add, they are healthy. It needs to stop. They are missing year-end activities. And it shouldn't be that way. We are no different than towns just close- And it shouldn't be that way. We are no different than towns just close by who have removed all of these policies. So I please ask you, the board and Dr. Charleston, to think about these kids and choose to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Davian Gekman, Borg Harvey Place. My name is Davian Gekman. I'm here to represent over six hundred students across the middle school and high school. We signed a petition calling for the last week of school to return to operating on a half-day schedule. I have multiple bullet points uh, in a pamphlet, which I hope I have the ability to give out at the end of my speech. Uh, these high, uh, to start off, um, of course, six hundred students, what does that mean? It means about fifty percent of the student body across the middle school and high school combined has agreed and signed a petition a- asking for the last week of school to turn into uh, operating under a half-day schedule. Uh, the first reason for this is that at the end of the year, just like seniors are suffering from senioritis, the students are simply looking at the end. They're looking at June twenty-third, twenty-fourth. I'm, I'm, I'm not exactly sure at the end of the, when the last day of school is, but it'll be hard for students to stay focused, making the extended class time not as meaningful. That's why I believe that as a half-day, you have shorter class periods, and I believe in the idea of Pomodoro, which is uh, having short periods of hard focus time. And then, you know, letting students, you know, have a small break, which I believe that a half-day does provide under half-day schedule, students or teachers have the ability to keep their students really more in focus, more in line during that short period, during that short class period. Uh, but what would teachers do if they were given the half-day schedule that works like as if it would work on a midterm or final week? That back what we had two years ago. And it was a two-hour block period, ha- uh, half-day. The English department stated that they would uh, do book tasting for students. Uh, they would have team building assignments, uh, such as talking as a group about what you liked the most and disliked the most about English this year. They would have a self-reflection uh, period where they truly give the students an understanding of what they should take away from the class. The Spanish department would use this time to teach students about, more about Hispanic culture and really, which is very important as we strive to improve uh, and recognize uh, other minorities in our community. Next, the social studies department would be finishing up presenting final projects, final benchmarks, and focus on current events. And finally, the math department will work on projects and are, and or finishing up presentations of final benchmarks. But most importantly, I believe as a student, I advocate as long, as long as other students, that we just believe that the they should work as a normal half-day schedule because for high school students who are in classes alongside seniors, we believe it is unfair that they, these juniors, seniors, sophomores, freshmen will be, have to give more time. Uh, will have to complete more assignments and thus, you know, putting more stress on these students who are younger than the seniors, which doesn't really make sense if the seniors should be the ones that should be, have the ability to take on more of a workload than these underclassmen. So in other words, why do other students have to do more work than the seniors when their grades are due June sixteenth or seventeenth? I'm not sure when that day is, but then the whole rest of the half, the week, then uh, teachers are going to be giving out, uh, teachers are going to be giving out assignments to these other students. Uh, I hope I have the ability to now pass out the pamphlet, if that's possible.
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Santos, if you'd uh, bring Jim Garofalo forward. Mr. Garofalo, if you'd please state your full name and address and make your comment before the board.
Okay, exactly. Carol Garofalo, one forty minute, Glen Rock, New Jersey. Um, we, my husband and I are still very concerned by the school's acceptance of the new and radical critical race theory. You don't eliminate racism by instituting more racism. We are also still concerned by the willingness of the school system to disregard the innocence of children and trample under feet the parents' right to direct the sex education of their own children. Under the protection of the Pupil Rights Amendment, the US Constitution and the New Jersey Constitution, a parent is guaranteed the right to raise his children as he sees fit and to direct their education in all areas. The current massive push to engage so much of a child's attention in the classroom on inappropriate sexual issues violates the morals and religious teachings of many parents. Not only are these topics the province of the parents, but they can be harmful, physical, emotionally and mentally, when appropriated by a school. The graphic even obscene materials provided by organizations such as Planned Parenthood, CICUS, Advocates for Youth, AMaze and others, instead of helping create massive confusion by causing the children to question their own gender when the DNA already proved from birth they were male or female, according to the science. Of further concern is the child's perception that the school is affirming and even encouraging these alternative sexual behaviors. And in fact, it is. I question, what is behind the extreme push for all of this sexual and gender information, which was not part of the twenty fourteen New Jersey health standards? How much parental knowledge and input were sought when these standards were being adopted? Were there experts from only the extreme points of view or were any religious leaders consulted or do you? Why are so many resources on the State Department of Education website uh, there to support transgender students when there are virtually none supporting traditional heterosexual lifestyles or the once mandated abstinence education? Does Glen Rock intend to balance? Glen Rock intended to balance the resources to represent all sexualities and lifestyles, including heterosexuality, abstinence and traditional marriage. Marriage is not even mentioned as parenting option in the twenty twenty standards. It's mentioned more than once in twenty fourteen. And research still demonstrates that children do best in a home with a mother and father. Finally, I hope that Glen Rock will at least use the twenty fourteen standards as its guide. The twenty fourteen standards are still problematic as the seeds of division are already being planted. But those of twenty twenty have taken impropriety and pornography to a new level. I've read that pornography is more addictive than drugs. Parents have entrusted you with the safety and well-being of their children as you oversee their education. I hope you will take that seriously enough to put some brakes on this aggressive cultural indoctrination. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Ashling Quinn Door, one sixteen Hellman Avenue. Good evening, Dr. Charleston and Board. I stand before you a concerned parent and a voice for families unaware of what has transpired these past few weeks. Last Friday, district-wide communication implemented test to stay as a new policy moving forward for students who are contact traced. What the email did not mention was the discriminatory policy it replaced. Up until last Friday, unvaccinated children who were potentially contact traced were yanked midday from their classrooms and told they would not be able to return to school for five consecutive days. Upon their return, they would be required to wear masks for five days thereafter. Parents were receiving calls to pick their child up immediately and told to quarantine for five days. There would be no work sent home and no Zoom instruction provided. Instead, a potentially healthy child was left behind, sitting home, learning nothing. As parents scrambled to find childcare, inevitably having to call out of work themselves with no one to watch their child. Furthermore, once these children were allowed back to school, they were required to wear a mask for five days. Vaccinated children, on the other hand, were unfazed. As there was no change in instruction or routine, they could resume school normally. This board was okay with discriminating children based on vaccination status. They were okay with violating inclusion policies which require equal and biased free access for all students to all facilities, programs, activities regardless of race, creed or religion. I highlight religion because some vaccination statuses are based on religious exemptions. This board was okay with segregating students on a quarantine policy that breaks health privacy laws. These privacy laws revealed every student's vaccination status when they were kicked out of school for five days. And then again, highlighting that status by enforcing a mask upon their return. How in the world was this happening in our town? How is such discrimination and exclusion happening in a town that holds marches and parades and fundraisers based on inclusion and acceptance of everyone? Dr. Charleston, you said in multiple emails, it was Glen Rock's Board of Health who implements the change in this policy. You said it was a multitude of other people you directed me to. All of whom confirmed the ultimate authority comes from the superintendent. There was no public health emergency, no law, no regulation, no executive order, no mandate. Nothing directing children to quarantine based on their vaccination status. This policy was yours, held under your authority and should have never been implemented. May I remind you all of the day you swore under oath to advocate for our children's education?
Three minutes, time's up. Thank you very much.
You owe them more.
Good evening, Dr. Charleston and the Board of Ed. I appreciate and thank you for everything you guys do. Um, I do have a few questions to direct towards Dr. Charleston. My name is Tim McDonald, by the way, five oh two.
Can you just say your, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I understand I have three minutes, so I'll try and make this quick because I do want to get clear answers. Is this a good arena to do this, to have clear answers from you and the board?
We don't answer questions.
Do, you do not answer?
We don't answer questions at board meetings, no.
Okay, so where is, besides an email, where can I do this personally with everyone here?
It doesn't work, it doesn't work like that. If you have uh, specific questions, best addressed to you at a school nurse, building principal, we encourage you to follow the chain of command.
I understand, but it just, like Ashling said, it becomes circles and I never get answers. That's why I'm here.
Feel free to call my office tomorrow, I'd be happy to speak with you.
Do you have open meeting times that I can come in?
Keep my office a call tomorrow and then we'll see what scheduled time.
Was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Santos, if you'd bring uh, Colleen forward. Colleen, if you'd please state your full name and address and make your comment before the board.
Hi, this is Colleen Manley from Seventy Ridge Road. Uh, I just wanted to say, I don't have any more detail than what's in G twenty-one, but I was pleased to see um, the board is contracting, it appears to be to sort of support a staff wellness program. Um, it says focused on educator bandwidth, including a need survey, data analysis and staff and administrative training. So I'm just very um, happy to see that in terms of creating an overall um, you know, a continuous improvement approach to the environment for teachers. And I also wanted to thank um, Ms. Cook and Ms. Hamilton. Um, they've both been um, great teachers for my own children and I just wanted to thank them for uh, all of their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Maggie Jacoby, thirty-six Boulevard. Thank you guys for all that you do for our students and our schools. Um, I'm speaking to support the district's work to celebrate the beautiful diversity within and outside of the Glen Rock community. Public education does more than simply teach core subjects. It prepares our youngest citizens to be productive, thoughtful, curious and empathetic members of society. There is more work to be done, but I'm really heartened by the efforts I have seen so far and look forward to the district's continued DEI work. I also want to express my support for New Jersey's revised comprehensive health and physical education standards. Research shows that when sex education is comprehensive, students feel more informed, make safer choices and have healthier outcomes, resulting in fewer unplanned pregnancies and more protection against sexually transmitted diseases and infections. The added guidelines that discuss the range of ways people express their gender and gender stereotypes is another tool for students to grow into accepting and respectful adults. LGBTQIA youth and families should feel safe and welcomed in our town. And a good step in that direction is by educating and understanding the intricacies of gender and sexuality. The right information at the right time, taught by the right people, will help our children understand that every person deserves respect, no matter their identity or expression, and hopefully lead to more acceptance and less bullying. I encourage the board to ensure that our staff receive the proper training and support it needs or they need to thoughtfully implement these standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone on Zoom, Mr. Underconnect?
Any uh, other members of the public, either uh, personally present or virtually, have any question, comments to make before the board, uh, virtual members, if so, please raise your hand. Going once. Going twice.
Got one here.
Tim McDonald again, five oh two, Dremizav. Uh, just a short statement, since I will not get questions answered. Dr. Charleston, the students and the parents need your support desperately in this situation. And we need you to begin fighting for the education of the students and to keep them in the classroom to the best of your ability. We are begging you to do this. I'm begging you to do this. Please, for the children and their education, keep them regardless of their vaccine status in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rundell, there's no other uh, comments uh, from the virtual members of the public.
Alright, I'll close public comment at eight fifteen. Um, so now I just need a motion to adjourn our meeting. Uh, so we're gonna I need a motion to recess from open or from public into closed. No action will be taken, so we'll not come back. Dr. Poochie Bender, seconded by Mr. Corey. At all in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned.